I call this a special meeting of the Southwest Licking Board of Education to order. It is seven o'clock in the Board of Education meeting room. The meeting notice, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code, notices hereby given that a special meeting of the Southwest Licking Local School District, Board of Education, Fairfield and Licking Counties, Ohio, is scheduled to be held on Tuesday, April 25th at 7:00 PM. This special meeting will be held in the Southwest Licking School District Board of Meeting Room, 927B South Street, Patasko, Ohio. This special meeting is a reschedule of the April 20th, 2023 Regular Board Meeting. The purpose of the meeting is for general purposes, including presentations, requests to speak on agenda items, approval of minutes, financial consent calendar, executive session for employment of public employees, personnel consent calendar, business items, treasure, treasures items, and superintendents items. I'd like to recognize all of our visitors in the room and watching online. If you would please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Jones, please call roll.
Mrs. Engel.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Vincent.
Here.
Mr. Ziney.
Here.
Mrs. Spindler.
Here.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda with a friendly amendment to the agenda, and that would be to pull out BDDA policy and make it a separate item.
I'll second that. So that item would become like, um...
Which item is it?
It's under the, like, nine first readings. Yeah, that's fine. And it's policy BDDA. Roger.
I gotta get down to nine here, let's see.
You said BDDA?
It's the same one.
Oh, and A and H are the same, sorry.
Oh, all of the first readings are under A, but if she pulled it out, we would make it I, her... A little I.
Well, the only reason I was... BDDA is notification of meetings?
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about?
No.
BDDH is participation.
Right, that's the one, that's the public participation, correct?
Yeah.
Yes, that's the one I want.
Okay.
Anybody else? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mrs. Engel.
Yes.
Mr. Vincent.
Yes.
Mr. Ziney.
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler.
Yes. We have presentations today from Mr. Wehrman and Mrs. Keen.
All right. Good evening, just wanted to take a minute to talk a little bit about some of the good things that are going on at Kirkersville right now. We did successfully navigate that move over winter break. Our teachers did a great job of making the middle school look like an elementary school. So if you walked there, I know some of you've come through and gotten tours, Mr. Vincent's come through, Mr. Ziney. So teachers done a great job with that. So just want to take a second, kind of go over a few things that we're doing. We have a sixth grade reading buddies program. We're teaming up with Mrs. Hayes' classroom over at the middle school, since we're right there, it's a nice opportunity. They come over during their class, one of their morning classes and one afternoon class. They read some books with our kiddos there. They are building some of those good relationships, it's kind of neat to see. But another key thing that I really like is some of our teachers actually had some of those students. So the McGee's, I don't know if you know, I'm sure many of you know them. They came over and got to see some of those kiddos. I had them at Kirkersville as well, so it was really cool to see that. Teachers were really excited, the kids are really, really excited each month to see them. They come over, again, read a book with them. Just that positive interaction is really, really cool to see. So something we're really, really looking forward to continuing as we finish out the school year. And then we talked about what could this look like after next year when we go back to Kirkersville? So we'll have to figure out a way to keep that going. Also, we just had STEM Night. Our PTO worked, sponsored an event through the works. The works came out, brought about eight to 10 activities, you can see there. They had a Lego station, I was really excited. I'll let you guys take a look at this, I'll pass this around, Dr. Perkins. Someone thought it was nice to make a Lego picture of me, so I'll let you guys take a look at that. So my orange hat, I don't know if many of you know, but that's something that I never liked to wear around Kirkersville. The kids see me in that all the time. But we had a dinosaur building station there. The Lego station, they brought in some big styrofoam blocks the kiddos could make different things with. And then also had the troop from the middle school, Troop 21, the scout troop came over. They worked the stations that the kids were being part of, they made slime, kids loved that, that was really, really big. What I really liked about this was, as you notice there, it was parents working with the kids. It wasn't just the kiddos doing the work and the parents were kind of sitting back on their phone. They were in there building things, making the slime, making those dinosaurs down there that you see. So that was really a cool thing to have. We appreciate the PTO support on that, covering that cost for us. Witz was also there, who doesn't love ice cream, right? So the families were able to get some ice cream and a portion of those proceeds, again, will be donated back, donated back to the PTO. We're going to use that to help fund some of our field day activities. Let's see here, Batel Foundation, Batel Foundation Fund of the Columbus Foundation Grant. Mrs. Trenish is actually here, raise your hand there. She received a grant for $5,000 to purchase STEM items in her classroom. She used part of that grant money for connect sets and some other things there, so the kiddos were able to do some of those STEM activities. They're given directions, they have to build certain things. I had a video of something they'd built, it's a kind of that race card, it would move around, it's pretty cool. So it's really neat that she was able to apply for that, get that, again, another opportunity for our kids to get some of that hands-on activity. They're really, really enjoying third grade, so great job, Mrs. Trenish. Next one there, Right to Read Week, we just wrapped this up not too long ago. We had superheroes from the community come in and read to the students and talked about their careers. Yes, down there in the bottom corner there, that is our own Dr. Moore. She came in and read to them, you're welcome. She came in and read to them, as well as some other community members. They came in, talked about their careers, fit firefighters. We also had an artist, he's local to Ohio, his name is Dwayne Abel, writes comic strips. He came in, talked to the kids, did some graphics up there. Kids were able to win some of those, so each grade level one student was selected to win one of his drawings. They really enjoyed that. SOU students, we've been working with Mr. Perkins, the athletic director at the high school, for a couple of years now. He applied and receives books from the Second and Seventh Foundation. So he sends his team SOU students over, they go into the second grade classrooms, they read those books to the kids. And then each student, so I'll give you one of these as well. Each student gets a book to take home with them, I'll let you just take a quick look at that. So we're excited to be a part of that, we want to keep that up. I know, I think every elementary does that, so it's really just a neat program, again, positive, high school students coming over, working, talking with our kids, so we really like that. Let's see here, watchdogs, I know some of you have been a part of that. We are still rocking and rolling that at Kirkersville. Again, it's a huge success, they come in, we've adjusted what they're doing a little bit at Kirk. They come in, they're still going in their students' classrooms, and they're still being a part of our lunch and recess, which they really like. But they're also now giving students those sensory breaks that they need. So they're taking some students out, working with them, and taking to our sensory room, our sensory walk, some of those different areas that we have. Giving them a little bit of a break, giving, again, some of that positive male role model, so it's really a cool thing. We've had over 100 this year, we have almost two a day. And we didn't, we didn't have any in December because we were packing up, and we didn't have any in January because we were unpacking. But to have 100, we'll be up over 150 by the time the end of the school year comes. So really excited to continue to have that at our school. Upcoming events. There we go. Lot going on, just like every building, as we try to finish out the school year. The picture down there on the left is Mrs. Haynes, she's new to us this year, but she has a choir. On May 2nd, K1 will have a concert during the art show, so they're going to do their little performance. R23 did their grade level performance at winter break. And then also May 2nd and 4th, we're not doing the muffins with moms, donuts with dads, we're doing breakfast with a buddy. So families will be able to come in, have breakfast with their students. May 8th, kindergarten screening, so we're excited for that. The 16th is that choir concert at Watkins Memorial High School. Excited because that, again, is another joint effort. So our choir is going to get up, sing a few songs, the high school choir is going to come in, sing a few songs. And then they got a couple of songs that they're going to sing together, so we're really excited to do that again this year. May 23rd, incoming kindergarten students get self-guided tours. Our parents, we found have asked, you know, want to get in the building and see those things, so we're going to have the time for them to come in, walk around, see Kirkersville, every elementary is doing this. They'll come in, see the different buildings, just kind of walk around, get a little bit of a comfort level. Again, we still have that supply drop-off night and everything in the, in the fall, but just another opportunity for them to come in and kind of see where we're at, and if I'll answer any questions they might have. May 25th, field day, kids love this. We're excited to have all those activities out there, a ton of parent volunteers in. And then May 26th, the kids' favorite day, the last day of school, sometimes a teacher's favorite day as well. So we got a lot still to cram into these last four or five weeks that we have of school. We do have one more special guest that's going to come in. We do on Friday mornings, we give out golden tickets to students. They get those golden tickets for doing good things, practicing our character traits. Their names are drawn and they get a sticker, a bracelet, and a pencil, and our Cool Cat is here to present you with them. So Cool Cat, come on up, we'll give them each one of those prizes, just a little something, have him come up here, we'll give him some more. I can take it for you, it's a cute lady. The Cool Cat is here, Mr. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just a little, little thing that the kids all receive, they're really excited, they wear these around school. Everyone gets to see that, you know, they're doing a great job, and they get to, they get to be recognized for that, so.
Very cool.
Cool Cat, we thank you for coming to see this.
Thank you, Cool Cat.
We're very excited. All right, thank you so much, and thank you, any questions or anything else, Jeff, me, if not, I appreciate your time tonight. We look forward to a great ending of the school year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Keen.
Thank you so much for having the middle school out tonight to talk about some of our amazing programs. I brought three teachers with me, first you'll hear from Amber Prater, then Deanna Carpeuz, followed by Cassie Deem. You'll also hear from some of our students throughout the presentation. Sorry about that.
Go ahead, Amber.
My favorite concert on September 4th.
What's something you like about the middle school?
Well, I like part of the middle school as being a part of the community, our culture.
Thank you.
So as Mrs. Keen mentioned, I'm Amber Prater, I teach sixth grade humanities. So at the middle school, we teach double block of ELA and social studies together, and that's what we call humanities. Our goal for that is to help the sixth graders transition smoothly into middle school from this. So we still try to keep learning really fun and do really engaging things, and one of the ways that we do that is through transformations. So we start the year with a book listing to help get them excited about reading. We celebrated Talk Like a Pirate Day and did just the comprehension activities and things like that. We start in January, back up with a boot camp to help them get back into the mindset with our PBIS expectations and for viewing growth mindset, and then also goal setting. And then a little bit later after that, we did our Starbooks transformation to help introduce our civilization literature circle books. Students have a few different options to choose from, and you'll hear more about that in a second. Our two biggest ones that we did this year were FBI Day and Surgery Day, and we use those as like a fun way to do test prep to review all the skills that we have learned throughout the year. So what they're currently working on is the Civilization Literature Circles, and these are some of the titles that they were able to choose from for their book circles. So they get together about once a week or every few weeks to talk about their book, and we are focusing on teaching the social studies, the ELA skills through the social studies content. So that's the goal with this, is to have a fun storyline, but also teach the aspects of our ancient civilization, which all these fantasy books do. In the top left corner, you can see they have this kind of trackway that they've been using to jot down their thoughts while they're reading, to also connect to Graves, which is what we've been kind of guiding social studies with. It stands for Geography, Religion, Achievements, Politics, Economics, and Social Structure. So that's what we use to teach all of the civilizations.
Hi.
And then they are going to connect that, or they are currently connecting that to this Civilization Traveler Research Project that they are doing kind of as to wrap up the year. So they are researching more in-depth the civilization that their books are about, and then they are going to be teaching each other about those civilizations. So they are doing all the learning with that, we're more just facilitators in the classroom, and they are going to be the teachers here in a few weeks, teaching each other about that. So we have a few students who are going to talk to you about sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Laura, I'm sixth grade.
Hi, I'm Hannah, I'm seventh grade.
What do you both love the most about the middle school?
Oh, I like my hands, it's beautiful, it's fire, it's really, and I like the water, because I like dirt too.
Um, I like walking, because I'm really excited, and Miss Vera, Miss Marion, and Miss German, really lovely, so compassionate to me.
Thank you both so much.
Hi, my name's Deanna Carpeuz, I'm the agricultural teacher, I teach the sevens and eighth graders. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about our program, where we started, where we are going, I think we went a little too far. So where we started, our first year, last year when we first started the program, we had about 70 students in three classes. We had kind of an empty courtyard, and we had really no indoor growth spaces at the time. The first year, we did a lot of partner building. We reached out to a lot of people in the community and built a lot of partnerships. Then we started building some vegetable gardens and, and pollinator gardens, and you can kind of see the students working on building those and setting those up. So that was kind of our first year, we did receive quite a few grants in our first year. We got the Wild West Pollinator Grant, we got a grant from Licking County Soil and Water for our aquaponic system. We got an OLSN grant, the STEM grant, we got that for our food forest, so it kind of gave our food forest a kickstart. And then we also got the OE grant, which we are still using those funds right now. So we began working on our food forest, and we hatched our first chickens. Where we are now, two years into the program. So throughout this school year, we had about 390 students attend the agricultural classes, and we've had quite a few students for the next year, actually, I think more than that, who have requested our class for next year. We have a really awesome, big, beautiful greenhouse, and you can kind of see some of the pictures there, those are the plants that the students have been working on, planting for our greenhouse sale that's coming up in May. We have somehow indoor growing facilities, so we have, this is our grow tower. We harvested that lettuce and we use that lettuce in our food science lessons. We have officially established an FFA chapter as of March, and we have, I have already set up indoor growing spaces there. These are some of the community partners that we have partnered with, so Licking County Soil and Water, we've had them not only give us, we got the grant through them, but we also have had some of them come out and listen to presentations and give us feedback on some of the things that we've been doing in class. Licking County Master Gardeners, Tasco Parks and Rec. We did have somebody recently from the Linn's Fruit Park come out and listen to students' presentations for our food forest. Leeward Energy has sponsored some of our projects and just donated trees for us. The gym in Lena, she, they have a maple, maple tree park, so they
Oh, wow.
...sack in the wintertime, and they came out and you can kind of see pictures of the students. They learned how to tap the trees, they brought everything out and taught the kids how to tap the trees, and then now we tap the trees and boil it down for syrup, and the kids get to make pancakes and taste it, so. We had a carpenter come out and help us with our aquaponic systems, and then Metachella Urban Farms, they're in Columbus, and he helped throughout the summer. The structure of our semester is we start with soil sciences, then we go into plant sciences, animal sciences, and food sciences. And then throughout that time, students are doing pretty much all project-based learning. They have a lot of hands-on experiences, as you can see in these pictures. We have chickens, we have our therapy dog in training. We have some plants there that the students have propagated and they're caring for in our greenhouse, some food science examples, and then soil sciences. Future of the program, so we want to continue building our indoor and outdoor infrastructure. We have an aquaponic system, but we would like to continue to have students making improvements on, on these areas. Greenhouse system development, so kind of pulling some of that stem and figuring out how can we automate the watering, and you know, just little things like that that we can have them working on. Outdoor growing spaces, we have our food forest that is just kind of front of, we just got the fencing out. And the, we would like to kind of build our food production in there. Courtyard is same, creating a nice learning space, continue building our community partnerships. And then we would really like to work in a program where all of the food that we grow in our food forest and all the food that we grow in our greenhouse, we can donate to food insecure families. And then we want to continue to push into the elementary and intermediate buildings and continue expanding the TPL in the middle school. Go.
What do you guys like the most about the A program here?
So in these baskets here, there's some jam that the students make, eggs from our chickens, and the plants that the students have been caring for.
Wow.
Oh, and they also got to use the lathe a few days ago, and the honey dippers that are in there
That was awesome, thank you.
Really?
Wow, that's very cool.
This is too cool.
So I'm Cassie Deem, and I'm here to talk to you about Clubs on Fridays. And you're going to notice the tags on the boxes being passed out. Talk about Watkins Middle School and students finding homes within the community of our building.
Thank you.
Amber does a great job with that, with all of the things going on in humanities. And lots of kids find a home within the building of Watkins Middle School in our agricultural program. But we also feel that clubs have been a huge avenue for kids to find homes. And so our timeline was in September of 2001. Teachers were put on committees, and I serve on the DEI committee, and we wanted to see kids, where kids are at, what they think about the middle school, where they're coming from. We got a ton of feedback from them, we dove into looking at the results, and that has kind of led us to where we are today. And so I'm, I'm going to show you some of the interesting information. Our startling information was just over half of the kids in our building have come through Watkins Middle School for their whole educational career. So half of the kids are compared to half relatively new. The other thing that really caused DEI to want to take action, we asked, at my school, it's okay to be different. Forty-four point six percent were positive about it, 22.5 were pretty neutral, and 32.9% answered in a, in a uncomfortable way, and we felt that that was not okay. We also asked some open-ended questions about how can we make Watkins Middle School a positive place to be where everyone feels a part. And we heard a lot of common themes such as kindness, respect, learning about different cultures. When we asked for what kinds of things can we do to provide that, we heard a lot of clubs, activities, times for kids to interact. We reached out to kids to say, what do you want? What kinds of clubs do you want? We felt that it was important that only teachers who were interested in facilitating clubs, that they were comfortable with, because we wanted our clubs to be student-driven. And so we piloted with seventh and eighth graders who were interested in the spring of 2022, and we had 193 students participate, 13 staff, and we offered 11 clubs. We gave all students in our building the option this fall, and we had 843 students want to engage in clubs, and that's roughly 77% of our population. Forty-three staff wanted to participate as facilitators, and we are able to offer 35 clubs. And so some of the clubs have two teachers facilitating. So we started with students participating in clubs. We feel really good about students finding homes, making connections with peers, making connections with their staff. I facilitate the poetry club, and so I come into contact with sixth and seventh graders, which, and they're normally not a part of my world, and they get to just be. That's been really fun. Our goal, and we didn't hit it this year, but we're hoping to hit it next year, was to have kids travel, in a sense. Have one club visit another club. So not only do you have your home, but through visiting other clubs, we are hoping to build an appreciation for people who have different interests from you. We're also hoping with some scheduling that maybe next year, we can offer students two club opportunities. So one in first semester, one in second semester. We'll be surveying kids again to see other changes we should make, new clubs we should offer, but we felt like this has been a really fun and positive thing for us this year. So this is just a few of poetry and, and cooking and music club. Before we came, we surveyed kids last week just to get some feedback now that we've rolled it out. And those are just a few of the comments that we received from kids, but it certainly let us all feel like we were really on the right track. That was kind, that's kind of our goal, everybody has a place here.
I'm Piper Newman, and I'm an educator.
I'm Lola Graham, I'm a senator.
What does Friday Focus Block look like for you guys?
Um, so my Friday Focus Block, we always, I have this friend, and it's kind of like a study hall. And she finds a way to work with everyone and make it really enjoyable for everyone. And she picks out movies, and we just really gather together about it, and she makes it kind of movie.
We, I have art and craft with Miss Rose and Miss Shipley, and we paint and make bracelets, and we kind of just like feel like we're all doing it together, and it's beautiful.
Thank you guys so much.
So like I said, students had the choice, and when DEI made the decision to allow kids to choose to be in a club or not, our hope was, students who chose to remain in focus would have a non-club club. We figured those teachers would be shepherding those kids and building their community, and that was what Piper talked about. And so that's been really, that's been really fun to see. So even kids who didn't choose to participate, although we're hoping to go higher than 77% next year, even those who didn't participate have a place where they look forward to going on Fridays. And that's the middle school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was really great.
Yeah, it was.
For both schools. Thank you so much. We have a request to speak on agenda items, Mr. Ford? You know the drill, I'm assuming? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Corey Ford, and I reside at 701 Osborne Drive, Patasko, Ohio, 43062. It's kind of hard to follow up behind Cool Cat and plants.
I know.
My jokes are lame, so I'm just going to drop that one tonight. Before you, I handed out your active policy ADA, and I only printed off the first half, I want to draw your attention to item number eight. And for the audience, this is the educational philosophy of the board. Item number eight says, "Development of moral and ethical values on the part of youth is an important aspect of personal maturity for which the parent assumes the primary responsibility. However, the school district strives to reinforce that effort." Awesome. My big thing, one of my many big things is parents' rights. Anybody that's ever tried to teach my daughter knows that I can be a pain in the butt. You guys have the student handbooks tonight, and on the second or third page of those student handbooks, you have a philosophy statement. And the philosophy statement in the handbook, the first paragraph does talk about children's education being a cooperative effort between schools, the community, and the parents, and that's all it says about parents. So I'm going to draw your attention to the second half because the So I'm going to draw your attention to the second half because the second half of the philosophy statement actually doesn't ring true with what your active board policy says. Education must address the development of the whole child. Therefore, the schools will provide learning experiences which will contribute to the mental, physical, emotional, moral and social development of the student. Notice I didn't read anything about teamwork with parents there. We start going off the trail rails here, "School isn't the only source of education for child, parents are. The whole child framework has been around for nearly twenty-five years and children are less social, more distressed and less developed than any other time in history. Conservative parents like myself reject schools directing the morality, emotional and social development of their children. Some may argue that parents are less involved in development of their children nowadays. Behavioral issues and barriers to learning are, are at all times high and I argue that developing opt-out consent models discourages parent involvement. Regardless, a lack of parent involvement in education doesn't automatically mean that schools do it instead. Adopting philosophies that so explicitly take on the role of parents is a good way to ensure there's no room for them at the table in the future." The next, um, large section, actually I kind of agree with. "The school will provide the opportunity for the learning of basic skills such as reading, mathematics, vocational, scientific training, love of country, appreciation of the arts, the humanities, creative expression and the use of leisure time. Along with this, the schools will prepare the student for the democratic way of life and citizenship." I agree with that. Keep it. I love it. Going on, "This will include the developing of positive values with respect to justice, law, property and the rights and feelings and opinions of others." This is the philosophy of constructivism. It is the constructivism, uh, is utilized by the critical race theorists. Uh, the, the idea of kindness is that I'm going to turn your student into an agent of social change that will create the society that I want it to be. Um, that seems pretty far-fetched. I get it. I'll continue reading my notes. Values, while they're a good part of every child's development, is not the mission of public education. We need to revisit this philosophical statement and ensure that the rights of families to direct the upbringing of their own children is being respected. Throughout human history, ideologues that fail to convince the people through debate and societal discourse resort to imposing their bad ideas on children that don't have life experience and critical thinking and skills to combat them. The choice to adopt politics, moral values, mental health is a role of the realm of public education, but is in fact a political one. It is one that would have been made in full view of the public. The philosophy statement present in the handbooks and the handbooks before you tonight are at odds with board's policy ADA.
Thirty seconds.
With my last remaining thirty seconds, I'll, I'll point to the student clubs. My daughter was in the middle school. There were clubs that were mentioned that I had no idea about. Parents aren't notified what's going on and, and the individual up here said that the students ask for, for directed clubs. But when, when the teachers are, are coming up with the clubs and then asking the students if they want to be involved with it, that's not the students directing the clubs. Does that make sense?
Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Teamsters? Southwest Looking Education Association?
Yes.
You don't, but you still just have the five minutes, right? I think.
Good evening. I'm Janie Trenish, second vice president of SLE. The first agenda item I want to address tonight is the first reading of board policy B D D H, participation at board meetings. Typically tonight, our SLE president, Dr. Ball, would speak on behalf of SLE. When our president speaks for us on agenda and non-agenda items, she's not doing so as Paul Ball, but rather she speaks for us collectively as one. The comments made at the board meetings are a collective effort from the executive board, SLE council and our members. We have monthly building meetings and information gathering activities where we gather opinions, ideas and concerns of SLE and its members. We send our members to the school board agenda to receive feedback and we send a report about school board meetings, including what our president says at them. To give you just one example of how involved our members are in our communications with the board. When the high school staff was called together last Thursday to be told that Mrs. Latowitz had been asked to be the curriculum director, for many of the teachers, it was disappointing that she was leaving the building. One of our teachers even called out jokingly, "Can we speak at the board meeting protesting this decision?" I wanted to explain to you how SLE comes to speak in front of the board because there are two changes being proposed to board policy B D D H that will affect us. One change will eliminate community members signing up to speak directly before the board meeting starts. Instead, community members will be required to request to speak at least twenty-four hours in advance. As of last night, the board meet, the board agenda still said that Mrs. Latowitz would be given a three-year contract as the Watkins Memorial High School principal. That means under the new policy, no community member could speak on Mrs. Latowitz becoming curriculum director before action was taken. In fact, the agenda being used tonight was not finalized until this morning. The other change seems to be one that will only impact SLE or the Teamsters. The change would limit any one participant from speaking more than once at the same board meeting, which is a change from the current policy, limiting a participant to speaking only once on the same topic at each board meeting. Our president's the only person who has spoken twice during this school year or even in recent memory. We hope it's not the board's intention to quiet the voice of its teachers or to dictate who we choose to speak for us at our board meetings. We're asking that the board either eliminate this policy change, policy change to limit our ability to communicate with the board or to clarify that the change does not apply to the teachers association or the Teamsters. We believe the voice of the teacher should be important to the board and we hope the board will not limit our freedom to speak to the board using who we believe is best suited to represent our views on agenda and non-agenda items. The second agenda item I want to discuss is the Watkins Memorial High School principal vacancy. This position matters greatly to the S W L community, the high school students and the high school staff. We ask that the board not decide who will be the principal without including the teaching staff, the students and the community in the selection process. Until recent years, the principals and the superintendent positions have always been done through an extensive search to find the best candidate vetted by the community, students and staff. We hope the board will return to choosing the administrators of the district with input from the shareholders they will be hired to serve. The third item is the addition of a third administrative position by returning Mr. Hammond to his role as a family coordinator and hiring Mrs. Holman to take his current position as assistant principal at NA. This means the district added three full-time administrator positions for next year and also added two half-time administrative assistants by having two teachers on special assignments. Whether needed or not is one question, but the other question is how the board is taking on such a large expenditure in one year for just administrators. Especially since we are very concerned about proper staffing in schools, including having enough speech pathologists, special education teachers, school counselors and English language learners, teachers to meet our growing needs. We've also seen teaching positions cut, such as the district elementary gifted intervention specialist position next year, which supports our youngest students who are gifted, and two teacher coaching positions over the last two years. The last item from the agenda is the new addition of listing teachers who had doc days in March. Because this is an employee employer disciplinary matter, we're very concerned that this information's being submitted to the board for informational purposes and hence being distributed to the community.
Thirty seconds.
Wouldn't this information be properly shared in an executive session regarding personnel instead? I hope the board will seriously consider the concerns that SLE is, has regarding these issues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number four, approval of minutes from the March sixteenth regular board meeting.
Motion approval.
Any conversation? Mr. Jones?
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Uh, item five, financial report. Second. Mr. Jones?
Cool on agenda is the executive summary for March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Fairly routine, route, you can't talk, routine month. We did receive our final property tax settlements from Leaking in Fairfield County. For the month, it came in about five hundred and fifty-six thousand less than I anticipated, but year-to-date, it's actually almost eight hundred thousand higher than we anticipated. So that's definitely a good sign that we came in higher than we expected. Uh, all other revenue was very close to where we need to be at. Year-to-date, we're about two point two million ahead of where we anticipated being at this time. So really next source of revenue is income tax settlement, our last one, that comes this month. So we'll have a really good idea where our revenue end at for the year. The expenditures are pretty well right on what we expected. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on any of those items.
Hearing none. Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Um, item six, a motion, I need a motion to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of unemployment of a public employee.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. We will have business once we return, but we are adjourned at seven forty-one. Returning from executive session to open session at eight oh nine P M. Mr. Jones, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Engel?
Here.
Mrs. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Vincent?
Here.
Mr. Zany?
Here.
Mrs. Spindler?
Here.
Item seven is the personnel consent calendar. We have A through, um, O. Motion approve A through O. Second. Um, Dr. Perkins?
So, um, a couple of things I wanted to point out this evening, um, under C. Um, we are adding, um, Tanya Sherburne as our H R director. She's actually here this evening, if you want to. Anyway. I did want to share just a few words about Tanya. She has spent the last twelve years, uh, in H R, most recently working in grandville schools as H R director and business manager. Her experience has included recruitment, onboarding, employer relations, benefits administration and compliance. She holds a master's degree in educational leadership from Ashland and a bachelor's in secondary social studies education from the Ohio State University. She's married to the son, who's a freshman in college, and I am super excited that she's joining our team. So wanted to add that, um, and thank you for being here. And also that, um, uh, Melissa Latowitz will be, um, our new director of curriculum next year. Um, as Dr. Moore will be leaving us, um, for the university level. So we wish her luck and we're excited to have Melissa on board in that position as well. What else do I want to share? Let's see here, we have twenty new hires, um, on the board agenda. Ten of those are for growth. So we are, uh, moving right along and filling positions. Excited to bring, to be bringing on quite a few community members and some Watkins graduates as well, um, to our staff next year. Let's see. And then I did want to share, um, as it is new to the board agenda, I wanted to make note of the doc time. Um, we are, our legal, the school district attorney, um, shared with us that this is what we should be doing and we have not been doing it. So, um, per law and what the auditors look for, the doc time should be approved, um, by the board. So it will be on every board agenda moving forward.
Okay.
Attorney. And I think that's it for this section.
Any conversation? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Um, item eight, we have a, um, another personnel item. Motion to approve eight, A, B? Second. Um, any conversation? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Abstain?
Oh, is it? I have no idea what this is. I abstain.
This is the triple P.
Well, it doesn't say triple P on my agenda.
Under B?
Eight B. Got to go to the next one.
Whatever, I abstain.
There you go.
Oh, I see, okay. Sorry.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Um, we have, uh, item nine, business items. There are A, A through I. Oh, that's right, I. How about motion to approve nine, A through H?
Okay, second.
That's the right, that's the right term. Do we have any, um, discussion on any of A through H or anything to point out? I do.
Okay.
On handbooks?
Sure.
I would like to keep, and I'm looking specifically at dress code, I would like to keep consistent wording. So within that, it was, um, such and such was not permitted versus such and such is not acceptable. I, I think we just go with not permitted throughout the whole thing, so it's consistent.
It's just the macula.
Yep.
Yeah.
Do you want me to keep going or do you guys have other things on handbooks? If not, we'll move on down the list.
Good.
You're good?
Okay.
Do you have any, there's nothing, I mean, the student accident insurance is just a re-annual, okay. So, um, our new K three, new elementary school, um, this, this is on here to award Pepper Construction for, um, to build the school and also the fantastic news that, um, they came in significantly under, um, what we expected bid-wise. So we were able to add on all of these alternates, um, to the school, which we didn't anticipate we could do. And we also have Garvin Miller is working on getting us, um, a P R for the additional classrooms for growth. So that is going to be huge.
Do we have any idea how many additional classrooms we'll be able to add?
I think four to eight.
We're hoping eight, the estimate's eight. We're, we were four point two million dollars under budget. So this is nine hundred thousand, still leases about three point three and the estimate's three million for eight classrooms.
Okay.
So we're hoping we can get all eight back, but let's see, once, you know, Garvin Miller, I mean, they're here, if you have any questions, it was quite a surprise.
Is that realistic, do you think, in this economy? Eight? Or is that ambitious?
No, we think there's a good chance we get that.
Good. So, any idea why, why we came in so under budget? Any ideas? Yeah, absolutely, please.
So, uh, yeah, very good news. We have been tracking over budget all the way through, um, working with, um, Pepper in particular. And also the second low bidder was within a couple hundred thousand. Both of those contractors were very interested in the project and they bid it aggressively. Also, uh, we're, we're finding that, um, some of the, um, materials and labor and things like that, that after the escalation have kind of leveled off.
Okay.
So, which is good news.
Yeah.
So, yeah, very good news all around.
The good thing is we had two bidders that far under.
Right, yeah.
That makes you feel a lot better.
It does.
Even the third bidder was higher, but it was still under budget.
Yep.
Right.
So, I mean, that's definitely a good thing. And we still got more to do. We still have to bid the Turn Lane in Watkins. We have to bid Furniture yet, correct?
So when do you anticipate groundbreaking?
So the, the next step after you all approve this is, the information is submitted to OFCC and the contractor has to submit various paperwork and things like that. So, um, as far as the contractor being able to mobilize, it will be within three or four weeks.
And if they're, if, I've had this specific question. So if they're mobilized in three or four weeks, I'm assuming that means at that point, that, i.e. the softball fields will be no longer available in approximately three to four weeks?
Approximately, yes. And we'll work closely with the contractors to work within your, what your needs are and that kind of thing. Cause we'll still in session and, you know, so we'll coordinate all that.
Nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. It's nice to get good news.
Yes, it is.
Yes. Yes.
Do you have anything on E, Rick?
Do you want to talk about the easements, right? Right here, might as well do something. You drove two hours down, you might as well talk.
How much time do you have? So, one of the requirements for Kirkersville is to go through the TRC, through the, through the county, and one of their requirements is a deed and an easement. There's a detention pond that's located on the very north side of the property that's, you can't see from the road, it's along the, it's along the creek there to the back. Anyway, there's access that they need. So, we've been working with the school district legal counsel and also our civil engineering consultants to get all those. So, that's what that is for.
That should be the final thing for Kirkersville, right?
Yeah.
Any questions on that one?
Nope.
Okay. And then, the football field fence. So, prior to this meeting tonight, I presented at the Licking County Zoning Commission, we had to apply for a variance as the stadium is, in that area is actually zoned as residential. So, that was a six-feet fence only. So, to have eight feet, we had to apply for that, but the zoning commission granted that tonight, so this is a recommendation toward the bid for the football fence as well.
Now, that work, when do we think that will be completed? Like, will it be ready by football season?
I believe so, right?
Yeah, should be, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's the goal. And then, our normal ESC contract and our Phoenix EDC agreement, and if you have any questions on those, Dan Davis can answer those as well.
Are we right where we were last year? Are we above, under? Okay.
Any other discussion? Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item nine, I.
Thank you.
First reading of policy BDDH.
No motion to approve, start the discussion.
All right, discussion.
So, when looking at this, I don't believe that this five-minute or multiple talking is hindering the board at this time. I don't, could somebody look at it and say it's redundant? Perhaps. But I don't believe it's hindering the board. It's not preventing the board from doing the board business over the past years that we've had it. At most, we get a handful of people, and even that, I don't think we've even reached the 30-minute limit. I think after what recently happened with the dissemination of information, we've seen that we can hold numerous meetings and present stuff in public, and people still are not capturing everything that they should capture. So, I should, I believe we should give them every opportunity to come and speak, whether that be on the board, getting their name on the board agenda, or doing the five-minute ahead of time. I think we could probably look at this if it starts to present, prevent the board from doing their business, but that hasn't happened as of yet. And should that happen, I, my suggestion would be that we, we discuss it, we don't do it in the middle of a, a year. We have a discussion perhaps at the organizational meeting to send it to the policy, to have the policy committee review and kind of dictate, or not dictate, but suggest what we should do. And that's, like I said, that's, that's if it starts to prevent the board from being able to do board business.
And I think the policy advisory group, I really just came down to the fact that, I'm not sure, there's a 72-hour if we're, that's not necessary if, at all, if we have folks coming in. And I think the reason behind the, the proposed change was it gives those that sign up kind of like they're doing their, you know, due diligence, and then they have to wait till the very end. And the folks that walk in get the advantage of speaking right off the bat.
Right.
And they don't have to stay if they don't like to. And I think that's really the ultimate reasoning for the proposed change. I don't recall the, this change on the, on item six with the strike-through of on the same topic. I think that, I didn't, I don't remember us talking about that at the policy thing, but that's just the reason behind the proposed change, but definitely fine with that, too.
I talked to you earlier this week about this. I have concerns with this, big concerns with this. I do think the 24-hour thing is reasonable. I always thought seven, I always thought 72 was too much. Before I was on the board, I was burned by that a few times by two hours. But, you know, in a, in a world where we can shoot off emails and whatnot, I think 24 hours is perfectly legit. It was always my understanding that if you wanted your name on the agenda, then you could, then you would have to follow this policy to let them know 72 hours ahead of time. But if you didn't really care that your name was on the agenda, you could sign up at any time. So, even though being here and all that is public record, your name just wouldn't be on the agenda. And my, I was under the impression that, you know, even though it's the same thing, it's not really, because one is a more formal thing where someone's actual name is printed on the agenda, and the other is more of an informal thing where, yes, they're stating their name publicly, but nothing is, is on the agenda. And I, you know, I'm of the mind, there's no such thing as too commu, too much communication. And to me, this would inhibit communication, and it would take away from the public's ability to be involved, and I just, I, I cannot support that. Other than that, I think that was my only concerns. I mean, I, I go to some of the local, or I watch and see some of the local governments, and people on the spot are giving up to three minutes. I feel like we're, you know, even more generous giving, giving five. So, with that said, I do agree with what Mrs. Moore said, that perhaps, you know, if this is something the board needs to look at. I personally don't believe this is anything that needs to be looked at at all. But if the board feels that it needs to be looked at, I do believe an organizational meeting is a more appropriate place to do this than a meeting in the middle of April. But that's, that's just me.
Any further discussion?
Your motion was to just discuss it, correct?
Yeah, to start the discussion.
Okay.
Well, the motion was for the first reading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, we have to vote it down. If you don't want it, then you have to vote it down. Okay, Mr. Jones?
So, Mrs. Moore?
No.
Mrs. Engel?
No.
Mr. Vincent?
No.
Mr. Zany?
No.
Mrs., Mrs. Spindler?
No. Okay. Item 10, treasures items, donations.
Motion to approve with a thank you.
Second.
Yes, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Jones?
I do have one quick question. It says athletics baseball scoreboard. Is that the new scoreboard or the old baseball?
It's a new athletics, it's a new.
Okay.
Mr. Jones?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Mrs. Engel?
Yes.
Mr. Zany?
Yes.
Mrs. Spindler?
Yes. Item 11, superintendent's comments. Dr. Perkins?
Okay, I've got a couple of different things to share tonight. Last night, we had our first Patastola Advisory Committee. You'll be able to find those minutes on the website tomorrow. That'll be the first of, I anticipate, multiple meetings. It was a great conversation with a lot of different ideas about the repurposing of that building. So, as we narrow our focus a little and start to get a few less ideas, we'll start to share those more, but you can read all of the updates as well if you want to follow along and/or come if you're able to attend. And the next one will be in May, once everybody puts their participation availability in the Doodle Poll. So, just kind of want to update you on that. Dan Davis was, is going to receive an award for the employee campaign coordinator of the year through United Way. So, that will be next week. And, so, yeah, we congratulate Dan. And if anyone wants to join Dan and I, it's only a, a deal for $30 for a 6:15 a.m. breakfast. You can come help Dan and I celebrate his award. I'm not sure why it's only Dan and I right now, so plenty of space available. Yeah, that's not a joke. That part is serious, 6:15 a.m. Okay, so next week is the Arts Festival. Monday is Empty Bulls, so we'd love it if you were all able to come out and help support that and, and that program and Leeds, and we'll have all week, Monday through Friday, there's going to be performances, and you'll have to check out the art show and choir, band, orchestra, cabaret on Saturday. So, it's an event full, a week full of events, if your schedule allows for it. Well, let's see. Kindergarten registration is, is really baffling. I'm, I'm super anxious to receive our results from Cooperative Strategies for our next growth study update. It should be coming anytime now. We are at 221, which is down 35 from last year. So, this is an interesting number, because then when I switch gears and tell you about graduation, which is three weeks away, we'll be graduating 317 in this class compared to 421 in our freshman class.
Wow.
So, digest that number.
That's amazing.
Yeah, huge jump, which is why the kindergarten thing's interesting. So, anyways, graduation coming, and I wanted to share those numbers, too, because I found that fascinating. Just a little plug for our softball team that's currently ranked number one in the state. So, and the new facilities, which are amazing and fantastic. Let's see. Promises Friday, if you're, you know, looking for an opportunity to see our kids. And let's see what else. Oh, summer camps, I don't know if you've seen or not, but we are offering sports camps, two different versions for age groups, Down on the Farm, Wellness Camp, Steam Camp, Reading Enrichment. We have over, between Reading Enrichment and all those other camps, we have over 400 and, 400-plus kids registered right now, and still opportunity for more to come. So, lots of fun opportunities this summer. And I did want to just add that, because I know I mentioned it briefly in the hiring section, but with the recent addition of teachers, that is 20, 22 teachers only that we've added in the last two years for just growth, not counting our support staff or, you know, social workers, any paras, anything like that. So, I think that's a pretty large number to share. And I think that's it.
Awesome. All right.